We're using this mic. Maybe I should put it in front of my face. Good morning, everyone. This is the Spokane City Council Study Session for Thursday, June 17th. I'm City Council President Pro Tem Candace Mumm in for City Council President Brian Beggs today. And we have three items on our agenda. First, I want to welcome Mayor Nadine Woodward, who is here for an update on the Way Out Shelter transition. We've got about 20 minutes, and I see the mayor is on and ready from the seventh floor. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you. Would you like me to start?
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead.
All right. Well, thank you, Candace Mumm and the rest of council today. We have a slide presentation to show you along with what we're going to announce today. So I'm thankful for the time to address you. Wanted to give you an update on our homeless plan as we get ready to close the Way Out Shelter on Mission at the end of this month for renovations and our plan to relocate the 102 guests there from that shelter to facilities within our regional shelter system. The Way Out will reopen as Bridge Housing Program this fall to serve those who are ready to take the next step to exiting homelessness and into jobs and houses. I also want to thank those who are attending today's presentation with me, our provider partners, Union Gospel Mission, Salvation Army, the Guardian Foundation, and Truth Ministry for meeting together and coming up with a plan to meet this need. So Brian, next slide. We've accomplished a lot this year. Amazing what we've been able to do during COVID and since I first shared our homeless vision with you last July. Today I wanted to share with you our current status and again, our transition out of the Way Out Shelter. So next slide, please. This is a timeline of all the things that we've done since the very beginning of our COVID emergency. You can see that we followed the announcement brought by the state in February. We did so in March as a region and with the council. The city followed. Then in May, we transitioned from our seasonal warming shelter into a regional homeless COVID response. We wanted to make sure that our homeless were housed during a health pandemic. So we worked out of the Emergency Operations Center seven days a week for many, many months with our regional partners. We worked to find resources for those who are unhoused while following social distance guidelines. And we were able to use the County's Eighth Avenue Facility, the Spokane Public Library. We even used the Spokane Arena. And in July, our regional leadership group began meeting. That was the city and the county and the valley to talk about addressing homelessness for the first time together. I always say that's the silver lining of COVID, that our response to COVID set the framework for addressing how we handle homelessness regionally. That same month, I presented our homeless plan to all of you at study session. It was very well received. I want to thank council member Canir, who after seeing that plan said it was the first time that council had seen something so comprehensive and thorough. In August, just two months later, we were able to open the Way Out Shelter on Mission. And in the fall, we were able to flex our capacity. We added more beds to the regional system with partnerships with UGM and Truth Ministries. We opened the Cannon Shelter. And during major cold snaps, we were able to increase capacity by partnering with SNAP to offer hoteling. In May of this year, we updated council, you once again, on what our plan was going to be, renovations that had happened, the operation of Cannon, switching that to a 24-year-round operation, 24/7. And I want to thank council member Wilkerson for acknowledging that. This plan filled in the gaps, which is what we really needed to be doing regionally. So next slide, Brian. There's a lot going on there, I realize. This is a list of the nearly two dozen partners. Let you see that next slide. That have offered help throughout the region during this health pandemic. I'm so proud of our regional partnerships and the work of our providers. You can see them all here. Just incredible work. And then the next slides, I would say the next five slides or so, I'll get through these quickly. These are the ones that I shared with you a year ago in July, when I announced our overall plan and what we were going to do, working regionally to address homelessness. That included the referral-only Bridge Shelter, which is now the Way Out Shelter operated by the Salvation Army. We opened again that in August. It also presented the idea of operating Cannon year-round so that we could have a day shelter during the summer, and then we could pivot quickly to a warming center in the winter. We were able to invest a lot of CARESAC money into that building. As you recall, it was purchased by the city in 2019, but needed a lot of work and really wasn't a safe place for those who are unhoused. And we've had the guardians operate there. We also announced that we were going to look at a young adult shelter. We were able to receive Department of Commerce funds to operate that. We are very, very close to announcing a preliminary permanent location for that shelter outside of the downtown core that's closed the public transportation and offers young adults 18 to 24, opportunities for continuing education and technical training as well. So today, I want to share with you our plan for the Way Out Shelter. I'm getting a little bit ahead of you, Brian, so if you want to get to slide number 12. It will close at the end of June. So at the end of this month, the Way Out will close. Here we go. For about four months of renovation, it's planned to reopen as that Bridge Housing model and will continue to be operated by the Salvation Army. Now, while that work is being done, we do need to relocate 102 individuals out of the Way Out Shelter and into other facilities. So that's what we've been working on, and that's what I want to brief you on today. We convened a meeting of our provider partners that come up with a plan that leaves the municipal code that council passed last year on sheltering during our COVID response to maintain those 102 beds. So here's the plan. Next slide, Brian. And I want to thank UGM. They have stepped forward to add 65 new beds that are 24/7, all barriers removed. These are new beds to the system, to the regional system. The Salvation Army has identified about 70 people at the Way Out Shelter right now who want to be part of the Bridge Housing Shelter when we reopen. So those 65 people could move to UGM. They have said that they want to take the next step to move out of homelessness. Let me just say something really great about the Salvation Army. While they operated the Mission Way Out Shelter as a temporary drop-in facility, they've already been able to move 64 people out of homelessness and into housing. So a big thanks to the work that the Salvation Army is doing. That's why they wanted to identify enough of the people that are there now that would be able to move to UGM and then back to the Bridge Housing when we open that in the fall. So thank you so much. Catholic Charities is adding 35 new beds. They're part of a statewide pilot program that will loosen the COVID restrictions that we've had to operate our shelters under, that social distancing. They are adding 32, excuse me, 35 new beds because they won't have to adhere to those COVID regulations. And then Truth Ministries will offer 25 low-barrier beds for a total of 125 net new beds for our regional system. I'm also grateful for Salvation Army. They're going to use some of their staff while their shelter is closed down to help facilitate the transition from the residence admission to these other options that we have for them. So we're ready. We're executing this plan. Wanted to bring that to your attention. I wanted to again, thank all of our provider partners who are here that came up. They're the experts. They came up with this plan. I think it's a great one. So if anybody has any questions, be happy to take them. And if anybody had any questions for our providers, we've got many of them on the call with us this morning.
So this is Karen. I have a question. I just want to be sure that for the shelters that are opening up for the people that are moving out of the Way Out Shelter, so for instance, UGM, no barriers. So there is nothing that if there is somebody that is addicted or somebody that has different or no religious beliefs, and are they going to have a plan in place for our LGBTQ community that we've had problems a little bit before regarding communication and how to handle certain situations? So are they, are they ready to take, take that population as well?
Well, we've got three providers, so they could also go to House of Charity that's providing 35 new beds.
Right. I just want to make sure that they're all level, that UGM isn't going to turn somebody away that they may have to go somewhere else. Okay.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Mayor, this is Canir. Sorry, I had my hand up. This is great. Thank you for sharing this with us. My question is, in the prior administration, I sponsored and council passed a resolution asking that the other small municipalities, the county, take on some of the responsibility of housing, which they have done financially, but we still don't have a facility, for example, in the city of the Valley or Millwood or Cheney. And so I'm wondering if that, that conversation is still ongoing so that not everything is located within the city of Spokane?
That's a conversation that we've been having since we've been meeting regionally, Karen. So thank you for bringing that. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry for bringing that up. The Valley has been working on an effort to change their zoning to allow for shelters. That's a long process, as you know, with your planning experience, but a law was passed in the state legislature, I believe it's effective now, that prevents any municipality that has motels or hotels within its boundaries cannot ban shelters in their jurisdictions. So that really has changed the landscape for other partnering cities locating shelters there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. So two, two things. One, what's the kind of wraparound services component of this expansion? Is it simply an expansion of beds and folks will be staying there? Or will there be an actual service component to try to move them out of just being, you know, warehoused and actually into a better position? And then with regard to the, the region, I guess, what, what is being done to try and get the Valley to erect some sort of a facility? And will these be taking folks from the Valley who are experiencing homelessness, or will they be required to have their own facility going forward?
Well, you know, all of the shelters are in the city. I firmly believe this isn't just a city issue. It's a regional issue, and we need to have a more scattered model of where our shelters are located and resources as well. So those conversations are ongoing. As far as during this four-month temporary window that we're in before Bridge Housing opens up in the fall, UGM has wraparound services that they've been providing, you know, for 70 years. In fact, I think they're pretty much the model in our community for moving people out of homelessness. They move 200 of them every single year out of homelessness. So those, those opportunities will, will continue. I know at Cannon, there's some outreach that happens there. So, so I think those, those resources and services still would be available.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
So again, just for clarity, these new in-opportunity beds, are they only while the shelter is being remodeled, a closer renovations?
Yes.
And then that, they will go away? And so?
Well, the UGM, I'm sorry, the UGM beds are, are new, new to the system. Catholic Charities is adding 35 because they'll no longer have to adhere to the COVID regulations for social distancing. Those beds won't go away. Truth Ministry, Ministries is offering the 25 extra. They have offered overflow beds during the winter months for us. In fact, all, all this last winter, they offered 40 extra beds that we, the city paid down the $2 typical entrance fee that they had for those beds. We paid those down so that they were completely low barrier. So we, if we want them to, to offer that again next winter, I'm sure they would. They've done it in the past.
So this model actually expands our bed capacity once the shelter is back online after renovations?
Well, and after renovations at the Mission Building for the Bridge Housing, there will be 60 beds there for those who are going through Bridge Housing. They're being stabilized with wraparound services. The renovations that are going on, that will go on during the next four months will also include space in the basement there for 50 individuals. So right now, during COVID, they've offered beds for 102. When they reopen in the fall, it'll be 60 for Bridge and 50 for Emergency. So it'll actually be more, 110.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm just struggling. So the 65 new UGM beds and the 35 Catholic Charity beds, when the shelter is reopened after remodeling, those will still be available in the system. So that's why I'm asking, did we just expand capacity by 100? Or we will go back to the level we were? So are those permanent opportunities or no? That's what I'm asking.
The UGM beds, the extra new UGM beds, 65 of those, are transitional. They will not be permanent.
Okay.
Catholic Charities beds will be permanent because we won't have the COVID restrictions to operate under. I hope that makes sense. I know this is so confusing.
No, it, it, it does. I was just trying to see, is there actually growth or are we still somewhat stagnant in our beds? But 35 more, that's always a start.
35 more at Catholic Charities, and then when the Way Out opens, it'll be 110 and not 102. So we'll have more there.
Councilmember Stratten.
So I'm curious about when we add beds and wraparound services usually means additional funding. So I just have a question on, are we flexing money or how are we paying for this transition?
There is very little cost to this transition. UGM is not charging anything for adding 65 new beds. Catholic Charities, no expense there. They're, they're able to offer 35 new beds because they're relaxing the COVID restrictions. That's something that they would be doing anyway. And then Truth Ministries, we are continuing to pay down the $2 cost for those 25 beds. So really, that's the only cost we're incurring.
And then my other quick question, Candace, I'm sorry. So the, the Way Out Shelter that's going to become Bridge, Bridge Housing, so we'll have Bridge Housing for how many people? 30, did you say?
60.
60. And then is that still going to be a shelter in the basement? And are, do we have a plan to communicate that with the neighborhood as we move forward with this plan so they know that it will be Bridge Housing, but there will still be some, some beds available for emergency warming?
And, and we've communicated that early on, but we need to communicate that. Thank you, Karen, for moving forward. Yes, we will do that.
Okay.
Thanks.
I had just a couple of questions. I'm seeing that the capacity is mostly for men, and the only option for women is Cannon. So at the last report, I think there were about maybe 40 women at the, the Mission Center. I just want to make sure that women are taken care of. And then secondly, the Mission Director had reported this week at a neighborhood meeting that most of the guests had taken their COVID shots. Are we offering that with some of this shift? Because obviously, some of the COVID rules are relaxing potentially June 30th, but we still have a population that's very transitory. So if you could address both of those, thank you.
Yeah. So when it comes to vaccinations within our unhoused, Spokane Regional Health District has taken that on. They've done an incredible job. And they go into the shelters to offer vaccines. So I anticipate that that program will continue. We've been very, very fortunate that we have not had any major outbreaks during this health pandemic. So what was your first question?
It's about women because most of the expansion is for men.
Oh, yes. Yes. I'm glad you brought that up because the concern was women and, and those who are co-ed because Mission also has co-ed partners there. So what we're going to do is identify those at Cannon who can move out of Cannon and into, men who can move out of Cannon and into the UGM Shelter or Catholic Charities to free up more space at Cannon for women and for couples. And the guardians, we're working with the Guardians Foundation to do that.
Are there any more questions or comments from council to the, the mayor on this important topic? I'm just scanning through. Raise your hand or jump in. All right. Mayor, we appreciate your update, and there's a lot of work still to be done. And we appreciate all the partners who have stepped up, and many of them are on this call. And it's a lot of work. So we want to thank you for your time, and we hope to hear from you soon again. Thank you.
Councilmember Mumm, I know the mayor just finished. Could I just say to our providers out there, we are aware as council members that the wage pressures are real in providing this care. So as you are looking at the services you'll be providing for us and to our community, please let us know that sooner than later so we can adjust to meet the needs of parliament. Thank you for what you do.
Excellent comment. Councilmember Canir, you have a very well-thought-out resolution that you wanted to present today on a strategic plan for housing and homelessness. And we've set aside quite a bit of time to discuss it, and we've got lots of great partners on the call. So I will turn it over to you to manage that, and we'd love to hear more about your proposal.
Thanks. And before I do that, I want to say hello to former council member Mike Fagan. Howdy. Nice to see you. Thanks for being on this call.
Absolutely. Councilmember Canir, thank you very much for the recognition, and I really appreciate seeing some of my former colleagues, for sure. Hope everybody has a great day.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Great. So I had, Hannah Lee sent out what I'm proposing in the first package, and then just to be absolutely certain that you all received it, I sent it out again. And unfortunately, Jacoby's birthday is today, so I'm operating with only my left hand, not both hands. And I want to start out with a preamble. This is, this is a resolution only. It is not meant to surplant what the mayor just proposed whatsoever. It is meant to enhance. And I've been working with staff on this resolution for the last couple of weeks, including Cupid Alexander and Melissa Morrison. I really appreciate them spending time on this and helping both Jacoby and I work through some of these issues. It's clear that our city needs direction and our response to the dual crisis of housing attainability and homelessness, it's critical right now. While it isn't council's role to implement policy, we are certainly obliged to speak up as representatives of our community when we see a need to strategize a way forward on such an important issue. This resolution is a starting point for council to debate and shape a strategy to address housing and homelessness going forward. It's not meant to micromanage the administration. I just want to make that crystal clear. Instead, if passed, it would hopefully provide them with a clear list of priority actions that they would be assured they have council support on. The administration could then return to us for their budgeting, funding, or other implementation needs. And I believe this council has and will continue to commit the resources necessary to solve the problems associated with housing and homelessness in our city. We need a comprehensive strategy in place to guide that resource allocation. And what I'd like to do is just go through, not the whereas's, because those are not binding, they just set the stage, but I'd like to go through the second page where that actually lists some of the things that we need to implement. I'd like to have a discussion now, but because Jacoby's not here, if you could also send your comments to him to incorporate in a final draft, that would be really appreciated. So if you turn to the second page, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know how to put it up so that we can go over it on screen either. So I'll, I'll read it out unless, Councilmember Mumm, do you have a, another suggestion for me to do this?
Yeah, we have, we have a crackerjack in Hannah Lee Allers, and she's going to call up that resolution. We can go line by line if you'd like to discuss.
Perfect.
Just go ahead, go ahead and start, and she'll catch up.
Okay. So the following priority actions are foundation for a comprehensive strategy to address housing and homelessness.
This is the resolution, not the study session briefing paper.
Number one, the city of Spokane should produce an annual Spokane Housing Report to provide stakeholders and policymakers and an analysis of Spokane's housing market by neighborhood, housing type, and affordability using the latest data. The Spokane Housing Report should, should include a copy of the Housing Goal Monitoring Report required by the Comprehensive Plan Policy H 2.5. That is first. Second, since housing production is often based on market assumptions.
Hey, Lori, do you mind if we take this one by one? Because Councilmember Cathcart had something to say.
Okay. And I can't see you also to just jump.
I'll help.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure if you wanted to go through all of them or one by one. So if, if this is how you want to do it, I'm happy to jump in.
Sure.
Yeah. My, my only suggestion here is, I think we're missing one key element, which is some kind of an analysis or inventory of underbuilt, unimproved, under-improved lands, lots, parcels, however we want to do it, by each neighborhood. And I think if we can incorporate that along with the housing report of what is there, that will give us a much better perspective on what could be.
Perfect. And one extra step for you or for Shay, could you send that to Jacoby?
Yeah, no problem.
So, Councilmembers, I just think I'll add, I think you're talking about like the land quantity analysis? Is that what you're talking about? Because we do have that. I don't know if we do it at an update on an annual basis. It's, it's quite a bit of work. We could check with staff, planning staff, who might not be on this call, but I believe Kevin Freebot. Kevin Freebot was responsible for that. We do have that available now.
It's a few years old at this point.
It is. So I think five years, maybe, we update it?
Yeah, I was just going to, I mean, I agree with Michael, and boy, that would be great information if we could keep it updated and included, you know, yearly of what's available, what's underused, that kind of thing, because we would have that view then right there as we moved through the plan. So...
We don't need to use staff necessarily, because you're right, it is a lot of work, but we could contract that out once a year just to make sure that it's updated and current.
Let's just check with staff, because I think we have, you know, we've got it in our GIS, so.
Yeah.
Well, but the problem is, I think the GIS is sort of an estimation. It's not an actual, you know, eyes-on inventory. So we're making a lot of assumptions when we use the land quantity analysis model. And so I think something that's more accurate would give us a much better situation to, or a much better position to start from.
Any other comments on number one? Good. Number two, since housing production is often based on market assumptions associated with a cost-per-unit model, which allows for a projection of reasonable targets for unit production, the city should create a housing development and unit production projection based on the cost-per-unit model to establish a goal that would meet the city's housing needs and increase overall production. Now, I think we have bits of this. This would be a little bit of a bigger list, but we do need targets. We need, and we know that we're above our target, what we've established for this year so far, but we need to make sure that we're keeping track of this and that we're on target every year. So, Councilmember Cathcart, do you have a comment on that?
Just a question for clarity. So are you trying to identify price targets for market rate housing, or is this for subsidized housing? Or who is this targeted at?
So I would assume that it's a cost-per-unit model for, I want to say, workforce housing.
I guess workforce being like some sort of a lower-cost market rate workforce, or something that the city would subsidize with $15.90 money?
And I think that's something that we would need to flesh out a little bit. I'm not getting too far in the weeds with any of this, because I think these are suggestions that as we go forward, we're going to find ways to implement these and things that we need to adjust. So we don't want to get too much in the weeds with these.
No, but if I can jump in, I think you mean like the sales price, not the cost of producing it. The cost to the consumer, is that what you mean?
That's what I mean, yeah. Yes. That's what I'm talking about, is the cost to the consumer.
And Councilmember Kinnear and Cathcart also, I think as we work through this, we need to clean up, have more clarity on our language of low-income housing and workforce housing, because right now, I don't think there's a real distinction, or the line is very thin, and we can go from one to the other in a matter of a couple of thousand dollars.
I think you're right. I know that for me, when I think about workforce housing, I think of somebody like Jacoby, who's trying to buy a house right now, and he cannot. And people in our community who are making a livable wage but are unable to find a house. And so when I think of workforce housing, those are the folks I think of. I don't think of low income. But you're right, Councilmember, we do need to determine what that is, so that we all know what we're talking about. Any other comments on number two? The third one is to encourage regional leadership on homelessness, meet at a regional level with organizations, working to end homelessness to share information, and some of this we already do. I'm not aware that the VA is part of these conversations, and I think that is a huge missing piece, because we know that we have unhoused beds, and they have special needs. And right now, the VA is missing, and I think we need to gather them together and make them part of the conversation. So I've outlined some of the folks here, and there are probably others that we haven't thought of, but my main concern was the VA. Any comments?
Councilor Stratton?
I just want to add that I really think the VA is good. I also think that we need to put in here that higher education, every higher education entity in Spokane should be involved in this, and hospitals and care providers should be included in that.
Perfect. Yes, thank you. We talked about that before, Councilmember, so yes.
Right.
Councilwoman Wilkerson?
I am just going to weigh in on, I'm just glad to see DSHS in this conversation, or should be included. Again, most of our providers know a large amount of funding comes through that agency for a lot of the issues we are trying to address. And without them at the table, yeah, I just don't, it would be too big of a gap for us to fill. So that and DCYF around children. Perfect. Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay. You know, and I can't claim that I'm the expert on this. I had some, in my opinion, a really good mind helping me with this, so we're going to work together to make it better, so thank you. Number four was...
Oh, hang on, Lori. Councilmember Kinnear, I would like to maybe be a little bolder on number three, because encouraging regional leadership, what I would like to see, and you and I've had discussions about this, what I'm seeking is regional development of homeless services. And the mayor touched on that a little bit. We know that the city of Spokane has carried the weight of this for the entire county, and in some aspects, Eastern Washington and even North Idaho. So I was wondering if we could maybe make the language a little stronger and say something like, "should continue regional development of homeless services," because they have access to federal funding to support that, and I would like to encourage them to do that. I think the Valley is, but there are other smaller communities that could also participate as well in some way. So if there's a way to, I can work with you offline on that.
Yes, thank you. And you are absolutely right, and we can't make that a little stronger or a lot stronger. Melissa, you just sent me something about tribal leaders. Do you want to jump in? Is she on the call? Okay. So I think she wants to include tribal leaders there as well in number three.
I would add that, that there's, you know, we have had discussions for the last couple of years with a few of the tribal members wanting to talk about a, some kind of a tribal village with affordable housing. And SNAP was great. They kind of jumped up and said, "We would be really, really anxious to have that discussion." So those discussions are happening. I think it's a good addition.
Okay, good. And I couldn't read the whole thing that she sent me. It just came through my screen, and then it disappeared. So I'll incorporate that as well. Thank you, Councilmember Stratton. Number four is work to align entities and governmental partners engaging in similar housing homelessness deliverables within the city in an effort to utilize current capacity, leverage funding, so all the obvious stuff, serve the unhoused population, maximize housing resources, and share best practices. So really, this is more of an elaborating on the partners that we have and making sure that we're not duplicating services and that we are working together. Anything you want to add on that? Okay. So number five, this was somewhat controversial, and when we had this conversation, we want to encourage data sharing, but encourage and actually getting the data is, they're two different things. And if it's a year old, it's not useful. So we need it in real time or as close to real time as possible. And we need a mechanism, so for some of the shelters or the entities that we don't fund, there's nothing obliging them to share their data. So we need some mechanism whereby they will do so, and that we can have everything in one spot, and we can see exactly what we're talking about when we talk about shelter, what is and is not available, and who is sheltered and who is not. So I want to work, massage this one a little bit, but you get the essence of what we're trying to provide there. Do we have any suggestions on that one?
Councilmember Cathcart has his hand raised. And then Councilmember Wilkerson.
Yeah, this is maybe more of a legal question. You know, I'm not one for a lot of regulation, but is there anything that we can do to just simply require that that data be shared, since there is such a broad community impact from the services they provide?
Some of the problems were that they use paper, and we're trying to use computers. So they may not have the capacity, and so that was one of the roadblocks that I encountered. And I would defer to our legal department to see if we could get everybody up and running with using the same system that we could share.
Well, that would be much better, but even if it's paper, I mean, just getting copies of that and having a partial FTE input, it would at least give us the data.
That's true. Yeah. I was hoping that it would be just a little more streamlined, but yeah.
I'd agree. That'd be way better, yeah.
Did somebody else have a comment on this?
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you. I like the term encourage, but I would also say we should incentivize them. There is a cost to this, and we have to recognize there's a cost to this. And so just to expect them to absorb it just to play with us, I think is not equitable. They're not receiving anything from us. So if there were incentives that we could put in place or help stand them up going forward across the board, I think that would resonate a little bit better than just encourage.
Thank you. Shall I go on to number six, Councilmember Mum? Guess that's a yes.
Yes, that's a nod, yes.
Okay. I'm reading, so I don't see any of you.
You're doing great.
Should support resource and referral information sharing of housing resources, housing opportunities available for income-restricted families and individuals. And again, ensure the information provided is correct and kept up to date. So this is more about not just houseless individuals, but getting people into housing and identifying those housing opportunities.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Any comments? Go ahead.
Clarity, Councilmember Kinnear, are you saying we should support/fund providers who are doing this, not stand up our own?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
And we do know some of them are doing this work already.
Yes, we just want to make sure we're not duplicating services and that there's coordination. Number seven is pilot and improve collaborative and coordinated approach to housing and homeless issues through a smart growth initiative. I thought, personally, I thought this was brilliant. NHHS should convene city departments, including planning, code enforcement, parks and rec, to align city investments and plans in order to increase the impact the city can make in the pursuit of shared community goals and outcomes. This, interdepartmental and community collaboration should focus on increasing access to housing that families and individuals can afford and mitigate displacement, expanding safety, increasing access to amenities and services, as well as other community elements that support health, safety, and prosperity. So this is about equity. This is about not displacement. It's about mitigating gentrification. Ultimately, the specific priorities and approach established through this initiative should be shaped and influenced by the local community, recognizing that the community has and will continue to change. So this is very high-level to me. And then the last bullet is about establishing short-term, medium, and long-term goals that we can accomplish.
Councilmember Kinnear, can you go back to that first one? I think it might be helpful to add utilities, because, and streets, because what we have seen is, we can have smart growth planning, but if we don't have city investments, it doesn't take off. And we see areas where we did have city investment, up on South Perry, East Sprague, North Monroe, it made a huge difference.
And we're talking about infrastructure then. So we're talking about roads, lighting, all of the stuff that spurs investment.
Placemaking, placemaking, yeah.
Yeah, placemaking, and what spur private investment.
Right.
Right.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
My gosh, I'm chatty today. So my concern, not about the proposal, but another bullet point, I don't see anywhere where we could take the time to evaluate any of this stuff, Councilmember.
So we have the number, the last one.
The last one, okay.
We can put something in there that, because we're going to establish the goals, then we would review them, whether we've met those goals. So we could put it in there.
Well, and I think that'd be great, because I think that has just, because there has been so many goals established or plans that have never been evaluated, or we haven't had serious conversations about what's working and what doesn't with ourselves, and stop throwing good money after bad, and, you know, and do a reset. And I think that's what the community wants, and I think really, that's what our departments and our employees would like to have also.
And you know, that was the plan for when we redid the East Sprague Corridor, and that was an initiative by former council president Ben Stucker and Councilmember Amber Walzdrift that really wanted to do that. It wasn't just about building the infrastructure, but it was about goal-setting, and it was about measuring the outcome so that we could replicate what worked and then discard what didn't work. And the measuring of the outcomes never happened. And so I think we need to go back to some of the ones that we did early on and say, "What's worked on this?" So that, you're right, Councilmembers, so we don't repeat things that have not worked and throw good money after bad. So thank you, yes.
And I will comment that, if I may, we did get some initial measurement off of North Monroe, and we certainly had anecdotal responses, and I'm looking to Councilmember Stratton from the businesses there. Cash registers were ringing, new customers were coming in, new businesses were starting up. So we do know that that kind of infrastructure and support, investment and support, definitely can turn things around.
Yes, and I was speaking specifically of East Sprague, because that was such, that was the first, well, actually, South Perry was the first. That never was measured either. But we can look at that and say, "That's a success." In some regards, we can also look at that and say, you know, "South Perry's been gentrified and pushed a lot of the original people out because it's become too expensive." And so that is part of what we need to measure, is how do we keep from displacing people from their homes and pricing them out? So number eight was the Fifth Avenue Initiative. That was mine, because the work that Councilmember Wilkerson did with planning staff, I thought that was brilliant, and I think that we need to implement that and fund that and get that. That should be our next targeted area for infrastructure improvement. And I'm hoping that the rest of the council agrees on this. Any comments?
Yeah, Councilmember Kinnear, fully support Fifth Avenue Initiative, but I would include, I mean, you want to talk about underserved areas, Northeast obviously is another, and I think there's an area, particularly in the NEPDA, where we're trying to see a lot of residential growth happen. And so I would like to offer that as an area to include in this as well.
Okay, sure. And keep in mind that we share this. So this is District One and District Two, and my district and Councilmember Wilkerson start at Fifth Avenue. So this is a shared, this is a shared goal for both District One and District Two. Number nine is prioritizing the 2019 competitiveness to fair housing and implementing recommended actions. And I am not as familiar with this, and Melissa Morrison, if you are on this, is there any information you could add to this? And I'm not sure she's listening, so.
If she's listening, could she just forward that to us? Because I've never seen it, so.
But these are important.
Melissa, are you on?
I don't know if I see her on. I was just gonna mention, those are important, and some of it is language. Um, when you're saying single family household, that may not be correct, 'cause, you know, it might be a single person, or, um, there's just some language things that are in there that we all should be aware of when we're creating policy.
And I will get her to forward that to us, all of us. Number 10 is the quarterly update from continuum of care, uh, for 2020 to 2025, the strategic plan to prevent and end homelessness. And I've outlined a couple of things that we should be updated on at, at a minimum, which is the five strategic objectives, recommendations for any city of Spokane, policy changes or funding needed. And I think that's crucial because no plan should just be put up on a shelf. We need to constantly be looking at it and, uh, making changes to things that we need or things that don't work. Then update on implementation of strategies outlined in the plan, what strategies have worked again, and what strategies should be reexamined. And then the dashboard of measurements. There we go, Councilmember Wilkerson, success and performance. So, performance measures essentially. Any additions or questions?
No, I just want to jump back up to number eight. So, just quickly to reaffirm Councilmember Cathcart, uh, with the NEPDA, District Two and this district share some of the same socioeconomic challenges. We just disinvestment over a period of time, or lack thereof. So, uh, I would be, I love East Fifth Avenue, but people need housing on both sides of the river. So, I would be supporting that also, Councilmember Cathcart.
Thank you. Okay. But number 11 is got a lot of bullet points.
Can you scoot down to 11?
And it essentially is talking about 1590.
Thank you.
And what priority investments exist within that framework? And if we can align those with our current needs, they should include, and I've put these in equal portions, but certainly these percentages could change. So, 25% is multifamily for income restricted families. And again, there's that, what does that mean, income restricted? So, we're gonna need to define that here as well. 25% of, for incentivizing workforce. And again, we need to identify what that is.
Can you just give us just a couple more lines?
And then, uh, capital construction maintenance and repairs of facilities for the homeless population.
Good.
So, shelters and transitional housing. And then, related to mental health wraparound services, we can't mitigate homelessness if we're not including wraparound services such as mental health and other programs at, at mitigating homelessness. And this would allow for 75% of all revenue collected to focus on building and supporting permanent housing solutions for families, both housed and unhoused within the city.
We've got Councilmember Stratton and Councilmember Cathcart.
Go ahead.
I just want to mention, um, besides 1590, somewhere we need to talk about the TIF dollars. And I don't know where that goes, but especially, I'm, I'm looking at West Central and the West Central TIF dollars that are available to be used for affordable housing.
Let's put that as number 12, if that's okay with you.
Okay. And maybe we include other tax increment districts, financing districts, because...
Sure. That, yeah, let's do a number 12 on that. Um, Cath, Mr. Cathcart, what were you going to say?
Yeah, actually, I think Cupid popped something in the chat box that was similar to one of the comments I was gonna make. And that's, I know there was some requirements as to a 60% funding level for some aspect of 1590, and I'm just not entirely sure of the language if that was for a particular type of housing. Uh, but it has to be for construction, I believe, uh, development or construction of housing. But the other comments I was gonna make are, um, one, I think in terms of the percentages, we might have a little bit more robust conversation with providers and builders, just to make sure that we're getting the bang for the buck. 'Cause 25% of 6 million for multifamilies, what, a million and a half? And that's not gonna get you very many units. So, just trying to think about what's the best way to, to approach this. The 25% on workforce, single family, I'd love to see that emphasized for homeownership opportunities. Um, and I think overall, a better investment could be for gap funding for some of this to, to make sure that we're getting more, more projects off the ground. And then, the last thing I'd, just maybe a question, is just kind of what is the interaction of this with the, the Housing Subcommittee? Because I, I get, I'm really kinda confused, because I, I thought that was constructed to specifically deliberate on 1590, but then our last meeting, we barely touched on 1590. So, I, I'm not entirely sure kind of what the interaction is with, with that. So, just kind of a question to pose.
And you know what? I'm confused about the, the, uh, who isn't confused about the...
Everybody is.
Yeah, okay.
Everybody is. We probably need to have a bigger, because not only are we confused, but now, from what I understand, there's, and there, and there's another group forming to talk housing and somewhere, it's all gonna collide, and it makes me nervous. So, maybe we have a separate discussion about that.
I think that's a good idea.
If it, if it's helpful, this is Cupid Alexander, uh, I, I can give a little bit of clarity that might help, uh, in the discussion of some of these items. Just, uh, let me know if there's any, anything.
Yeah.
Specific to, specific to 1590, um, as generally, uh, associated with other taxing resources like a bond or a levy, you have a different group because it's not a federal fund. All of our current oversight committees are for federal funds. This one, because it's the first city resource. And usually, as city resources come online, you see other committees come that are oversight of those specific funds. Um, with 1590, we were going to have a Spokane Housing Advisory Group, and it's just to create the framework. And then, that group goes away. So, it says, hey, if you're going to be applying for these dollars, knowing that whatever the percentage breakdown is going to go for these projects, here is what we're going to prioritize near, you know, near fresh food, near whatever we want, whatever the group decides. So, if we get five responses to an RFP, we know how we're going to rank them. And more importantly, the community knows how we're going to rank them. And then, the other side is that you have an oversight committee for the financial oversight of the funding resource, and that could be ongoing. And that could be the Housing Subcommittee, it could be whatever the mayor decides. But the important thing is that the same hand that receives the money and makes the rules is not the same hand that decides who is going to be getting the money, or inserting the money, or u- using the money. So, you have to separate out those uses, and that's the purpose of having different oversight for 1590. And those are specific to 1590. Now, I think the council president had some understanding of how he wanted to make sure this interacted with the Housing Subcommittee. Um, but 1590 in and of itself is a new resource, and since it's a new resource, you're having, uh, one group that's going to determine how the money is going to be used, like what the community is going to prioritize. So, when you're applying, even if it says, hey, 50% is going to go for affordable housing, well, if we get five projects, uh, how are we going to, um, determine which one we're going to fund? And this framework should be created by the community with their oversight and their input, and given to council and said, hey, does this sound about right? And then, that group goes away. Then, there's another group that says, okay, as we get the dollars out the door, and you see this with bonded projects, when you have like a hundred million dollar bonds or 215 million dollar bonds, whatever the bond size is.
Yeah, we're still there.
You usually have another group that's oversight over that. So, when they're seeing the responses in regards to...
That's what we're talking about.
Um, any cost overrun, they can, they're, they're the group that, um, determines if, if things are on, on, on pace. And usually, when you were working with a developer, they have contingencies because the cost of wood goes up or something like that. So, that's kind of how 1590, in my mind, as we were strategizing, was going to work.
We have, uh, Mr. Alexander on this call, obviously. Let's take advantage of that, ask all of our questions, uh, before we don't have access to him anymore.
Okay, take it down now.
So, here's my, can I ask a quick question?
Councilmember Stratton.
So, Cupid, the thing that, that I'm, I'm just, that's, I worry about, 'cause I worry all the time, how do we live up to this? And what kind of staffing do we need? I mean, I'm gonna be blunt. We haven't had full staffing in that office for a long time. And it looks to me like you're seven, there are seven or eight positions down. So, if, if we want to live up to this and live up to what we're sharing with the community and what we, we see as our vision, what kind of staffing realistically are we gonna have to look at?
Well, the beautiful thing is a lot of the ideas around what, uh, Councilmember Kinnear has created.
We can do it.
Staff has already been working ahead to help make sure that this work is aligned. I'll give you an example. When I first came in, I saw that we did not have someone on the staff that was a developer. So, currently, to civil service, uh, uh, there is a request to have a position that works kind of like a financial developer that can tell you, hey, this cost overrun because the cost projection is wrong by some developer, meaning that they're going to submit something to you. And someone, we need someone on staff that can say, hey, those cost projections are wrong because it's podium, or it goes over six feet, so you can't build wood, and their assumptions are wrong. So, you can say, actually, we have someone who has to, who's gonna ask you a few questions. Um, I, 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 I'd be remiss if I didn't call out, because I've been on this call the whole time. Staff has been doing amazing work, right? No one, no one points out that it's staff doing this work, but they're the ones who are doing the work. So, I want to be clear that. There's also some work on, on hand, and I heard the mention of this. There's also some work on hand to run what's called an RFI, a Request for Information, right? So, that, so we know what projects are in the pipeline, so we know when they're coming, we might be able to fill in the gap, as Councilmember Cathcart had said. David Lewis and, and CHHS and I have already started working on this to prepare you and sequence this work, so it makes it a little bit easier. There's still the issue of the staffing, but it's not an issue of the talent. The talent is there, right? But if we're not understanding what we're trying to solve for, what are we, like, what's the there there? Then, we're not going to be able to redirect individuals from unhoused situations into housing, especially during an affordability crisis. And we have to be honest with ourselves. Like, what are we trying to solve for? What is our toolbox? And how do we expand our toolbox when we need it before we need it? And what is the data, right? And so, I, as I've looked at this, I've seen that Councilmember Kinnear has laid out all of the specific parts that I would've, um, in a way that makes it possible, uh, to address the future and not be caught, um, um, standing on your heels. Uh, there, there are currently, um, individuals who are going through the process of being hired. There's going to be some people we have to hire. But, uh, the framework and the process to align any smart growth and prepare this community is well in place. Uh, and I would be happy to refer you to David Lewis within CHHS, George Dahl, Becky Toono. They're, they're the ones who talk about the actual built environment, and even with our CDDG dollars, we've been investing in units. In fact, um, you know, you have, we, we have people on staff, if, if you talk to Cassie Brown or, or Skyler Brown, we have individuals who look at the financing and the resources in ways that we can simplify. Um, as soon as we're completely staffed up, oh, they're off and running. But right now, I'm completely confident in some of the work that no one gave any of CHHS credit for, because they didn't take the time to understand, that's been amazing. And that's what, like, as a housing practitioner who doesn't want to congregate housing, uh, for low-income individuals, because we know that outcomes, um, shouldn't be determined by your zip code, and right now in Spokane, you can do that. How do we deconcentrate, redirect, get to functional zero, and allow our, our unhoused populations to move into, um, either supportive housing or affordable housing? And how do we help the community move from, um, affordable housing to homeownership? And I, to answer your question, uh, Councilmember Stratton, I think we're well within our way. It'll, some of it'll just take, once, once it's explained out a little bit more to you, it'll click. This is not hard, and it shouldn't be this heavy, um, because this community is working very hard, and you have gifted people. We're just trying to figure out ways to create onboard, so we can use, utilize everyone's talents.
Thank you, Cupid. And I'm just so sorry that you're gonna be leaving us. I wish that you could stay. You have done so much for so many inside City Hall. And, um, I know this council member is going to miss your expertise and your professionalism and your compassion. And, um, I'm sorry that it turned out that way, the way that it has. But you've had a lot of experience here in City Hall.
We are never sorry. We are always proud and grateful and thankful. We move with grace. Um, that's what I was taught. Uh, I have nothing bad to say about you all. I have the highest respect. I will work until I cannot work anymore, and then I will get up the next day and work again. That's how I'm built. Uh, and I, I'm built with transparency and honesty and fairness. Uh, and I look forward to that, and I've seen that in this community. I have nothing bad to say about this community. I have all the love, respect and, and, and just, you know, all the positive considerations. Um, and I think that there's so much good work. I am confident that we have created a framework in this time that will be sustainable, and I am confident in each of your leadership.
Well, you are a class act. And, uh, I'm speaking for myself, but I, I, I just really wish that things would've turned out differently. Thank you.
Okay, now I'm gonna cry.
Okay, Councilmember Wilkerson.
Uh, Cupid, just give me your forwarding address, so your pound cake will be there when you get there.
I am coming to your house to grab it. Plus, we gotta finish out some Fifth Avenue Initiative stuff.
Absolutely.
Um, and, and I, I think Councilmember Stratton, you had mentioned TIF districts. So, if I, if I beg the council to do anything, it's, um, think about how capital is stacked and where your money can be leveraged with other money, and how money, the color of money, how it talks to each other. Because when developers are coming, they're, they have to come up with a development deal that's based off a pro forma. It's like a mortgage, like a 30-year mortgage, and they have to make money off of it. But it's not always our responsibility to, um, fund everything, 'cause some of it might be smart. But then, when there are gaps, we can prioritize our resources, but there still has to be that capital stacking. So, when you talk to Capitol Charities, or you talk with the VOA, or when you're talking to the state, we were looking at ways, and, and Washington State Housing Finance, we were looking at ways, and I was conversing with them, because they wanted to add money to our money to help individuals purchase houses. And they were going to service it for free. It's currently underway. I talked to Steve Walker. They came and presented to you all, uh, at council, per my request. Um, and, you know, I think there are several opportunities if we ask ourselves the right questions, and we don't get bogged down in the things that are inconsequential, that are actually going to be worst practices, and concentrate poverty. Because at that point, then we've already lost, right? And, and in order to create walkable, sustainable, green, livable communities, what does that look like? I support Fifth Avenue Initiative because there's a beautiful library there and a park there. There's gonna be so many people who are going to say, hey, actually, wouldn't it be nice to live here? I brought my kid over there. And then, we've lost that opportunity. What if we captured that now to be the most walkable, beautiful, best new thing coming to Spokane? And it's another great neighborhood where it makes smart sense to have a little bit more density, because the anchors are there, and we're already investing there. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's, I, I, I'm, I'm excited about what the future holds, and I know the work will be, will, will just prove us all right in the future.
Councilmember Ma'am.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Councilmember Kinnear, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to ask one last time if anybody had any other discussion or questions or, uh, needed more information and, or questions for Cupid.
Councilmember Kinnear, this is Brian McClatchy. I just wanted to, uh, I wanted to highlight one aspect of what Cupid was talking about in the work that he's been leading on and doing a fantastic job at it, is the comprehensive nature of housing in our community, both what it enables and how we have to look at it. And so, to clarify a little bit on the Housing Ash, the Subcommittee, that's exactly what that group is intended to be, a comprehensive, all angles look at housing in our community. And to do that work, takes a lot of people from the community, um, a lot of stakeholders. And the 1590 working group is just one smaller component of that overall holistic look at how we address housing issues in our community. So, I just wanted to kind of put that out there and thank Cupid for his amazing partnership with Melissa Morrison and I, and the time he's been with the city. Thanks, Cupid.
Thank you, Brian. That was, I couldn't have said it better. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Kinnear, you would like us to send any other suggested edits to Jacoby? And what is our deadline?
I would like something by Monday noon, if possible.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments on the resolution? Great work.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any. Uh, and also, thank Jacoby too, 'cause I know he was...
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Very involved. Uh, next, we've had our fire chief on the line for quite some time, and I really appreciate you waiting. Um, we have another, um, sort of preventive opportunity here, uh, with the wildfire season upon us, and you have sent us quite a few documents. We do have about 30 to 35 minutes... We do have about 30 to 35 minutes to talk about this. I don't know if you need all of that. Chief?
Well, thank you, uh, Councilmember Mom. Actually Lance Dahl, the city's Fire Marshal, will be presenting and we'll try to do our best to, uh, meet your expectation in the limited amount of time that we have and, and make it all work. And then also, we're always available for the phone call, email or follow-up. That's no problem.
Lance, do you have the presentation with you or do you need us to bring that up?
No, I, I have everything, Councilwoman Mom. Uh, uh, thank you for having us here today. Thank you for the rest of the council members to be here and listen to this. Uh, thank you, Chief Schaper, for the opportunity, uh, to lead in the Fire Marshal's, uh, position here for, for the city, uh, as your Fire Marshal. It typically does take a little longer than 30 minutes to get through this, so I'm going to fly pretty fast. Um, I will be open for questions. My, my door is always open. And as the city opens, uh, since I've only been in this position about 10 months and haven't had the opportunity to drop by City Hall because not many people are there, I will, I will get over there and try to meet everybody, uh, uh, on the council and, and introduce my face if you haven't had the opportunity to, uh, to talk to me, uh, when I was the Assistant Fire Marshal. Two-fold here. We're going to talk about the wooey, uh, at the end. I'll try to wrap that up with the Wildland Urban Interface Code and the full adoption of that, uh, but a few parts that the state leaves for the municipalities to adopt. But, uh, I really want to talk about city growth and, uh, um, where we sit in the prevention division. So, are you seeing this screen right here?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So, uh, famous quote, uh, Benjamin Franklin, "An ounce prevention is better than a pound of cure." I'm not going to go into that long-term. The medical community has grabbed it and ran with it over the years, but it's actually a fire prevention quote. And, and, uh, the handle, mishandling of fire ashes started a fire in Benjamin Franklin's house and, and caused him to have to escape out the second floor window. So, um, that's kind of what fire prevention is about. It's, uh, it's about having the personnel and the opportunity to go out there and inspect buildings to ensure that buildings are, uh, uh, built to the proper standards for the state, uh, Fire Code and State Building Code to ensure that they're safe for our citizens. Um, back in 2004, uh, if you lived in this community, you know that we went through some severe budget crises back in 2004. And that affected not only the operational staff, uh, Chief Schaper's been able to get some grant funds over the years and get most of our operational staff back, but it affected the prevention division staff. And we lost, uh, a good number of, of our staff. Um, the prevention division lost 30% of its inspection staff back then and 25% of its support staff. So, which amounts, uh, uh, to four personnel, three of those being inspection line staff. Uh, in the meantime, since 2004, my stats go through 2019, uh, right now, uh, we've increased inspection approvals, uh, from just over 8,000 to almost 12,000 annually. So the workload's going up. Uh, the prevention division revenue comes from annual operating permits, uh, construction permits and plan review fees. Um, we also used to have a multi-family inspection program that we'd like to restart, uh, if, if we're able to fund, uh, some extra positions. You look at, uh, the prevention division's budget, uh, back in 2004, we were funded at about 25% from the, uh, revenue generated, uh, and the rest of that came from the general fund. Uh, currently, uh, our budget is funded by about 50% of revenue-based and 50% general fund-based. As compared to the overall fire department budget back in 2004, when we had more people to do the job and, and less revenue, uh, to speak of, we were about 6% of the overall fire department budget. Uh, our budget incrementally has, has dropped since then to about 2.71%. Um, when you look at the National Fire Academy standards throughout the United States, they say that budget to be healthy and wholesome as a, as a fire prevention division and have enough resources, uh, that should be 5% to 7% of your overall fire department budget. Back in 2004, our total revenues were a little over $371,000, uh, for permit fees. Uh, by 2019, that's climbed to about $703,000. Our base permit fee, uh, our last increase was in 2009. Our base fire department permit fee is currently $88. That was set in 2009 and has not been changed since then. The state average is about, uh, $200. Tacoma, who is typically our, uh, our closest comparable city size, fire department size, uh, is 280 and Seattle is 288 for their base fire department permit fees. So you can see that we haven't kept up with inflation. We haven't kept up with the rest of the state. Uh, my proposal is a new Spokane rate of $210, which is 75% of Tacoma, you know, a little less than that of Seattle's rate. Like to restart the multi-family inspection program. These are, uh, 15, we have about 1,524 buildings that we should be inspecting on an annual basis that we're not. Um, that would bring in a little more revenue. And that's a subsidized rate too. We'll go over that here in a little bit. Um, so with the increased, uh, operating permit fees, the increased, uh, construction permit and plan review fees and the multi-family inspection program, we would see a fee increase in the city of about $965,000. Um, the operating permit and construction permit fees are, are closer to 100% cost recovery when we look at, at man-hours and, uh, uh, full-time equivalency hours to complete those inspections. The multi-family inspection program is, is a more of a subsidized, it's a lesser rate, gets us into those, uh, those multi-family housing units and, and ensure that they're safe for the, for those community members that are renting. Um, we're understaffed. When you look at the national, uh, average on staffing model, when you look at how many inspections we're doing and, uh, what we should be doing, uh, we're severely understaffed here. Um, this is, uh, total number of inspections from 2004 through 2020. You can see it's pretty flat. I only have about, I only have five inspectors, um, and one assistant fire marshal. Uh, and we're doing the maximum amount of work that we can, which is about 10,000 inspectors, inspections a year, which is over, really over the national average per person. Um, part of our inspection, uh, work is, is reviewing, uh, inspection reports. These come in from our, uh, from our partners in public safety, our commercial, uh, inspectors out, uh, inspecting commercial alarm, commercial sprinklers. We look at those. Um, we're about 33%, we're about 2,000 reports behind in our, in our, uh, in our review of these. And so these have outstanding, typically can have outstanding, uh, notices of violation, um, deficiencies that need corrected. Um, our civil infraction due list is kind of what scares me a little more. Um, this is about a 500-page list of known outstanding code violations. It rolls weekly. As my guys have time, they make calls on these and try to collect the missing information and follow up that systems has been fixed. But when you look at our risk analysis as a city and the risk that we assume once we know that there's a problem, uh, we need to have the manpower to follow up and make sure that these are corrected in a timely manner. This kind of shows you where our operating permits have, have gone since 2004, uh, where we were a little over 1,200, 1,250 operating permits. Uh, we've been, uh, pushing between 2,000 and 2,200 right now. So more, more annual inspections, uh, for operating permits. You can see the tail off for 2020. That's mostly due to COVID, um, being behind in the inspection program or rolling inspections where businesses were closed and we just allowed them to roll their permit since they were closed. Um, part of our inspection work is new businesses and, and, and operating permits. I'm sure most everybody's aware of commercial construction, uh, even since 2004 where we've added the North Bank of the River and that. Uh, I, when you look at the total number of buildings we've added, we've added over 1,100 buildings, almost 1,200 buildings, but you really have to also look at the amount of commercial space we've added. We've added over 20 million square feet of commercial building space since 2004. And that's added to the division's workload. So that's a 25, 22 and 1/2% increase in our city's commercial building inventory that we're required to inspect on a, a one-year, two-year or three-year basis. And I, we just can't get through all the buildings with the staff that we come. The average, about 800 fire department construction permits a year. When you start looking at a new sprinkler, a new fire alarm, or what we call tenant improvements, where a business comes into a, to a, a building where a business has moved out and have to have change orders, either on the sprinkler system, alarm system, or different requirements because the occupancy classification has changed. Every, uh, new building or change of occupancy requires a fire department inspection. So my inspectors are out doing these, uh, think of a brand-new business that opens up that needs a certificate of occupancy inspection or a change. Those are actually completed through the building permit process and, and we get, we gain no revenue off that at the fire department, but we're required to do those inspections. Part of Chief Schaper's, uh, uh, marking orders to me when I took over this was to kind of look at the inspection standards and where we're, where are we meeting them as a city? And you'll see, uh, we're coming up on our Washington State Survey and Rating Bureau assessment this fall. That's the commercial insurance, uh, rating that the city gets. Um, and, and we're short of what their requirements are, but more importantly, we're really short of what the national standards are. Uh, high-risk occupancies, all those should be inspected annually. Moderate-risk occupancies, uh, every two years and lower-risk occupancies, which are things like your, uh, lawyer's offices, doctor's offices, that type of thing, uh, every three years. And critical infrastructure annually.
Say Lance?
Yes, ma'am.
On that, I remember participating in, um, sort of a work session several years ago prior to your arrival where we were really interested in accelerating that in order to improve our ratings so we could lower insurance rates for folks. Because insurance companies are getting much more specific and there was a tie to try to explain that to the business community by having a better, um, inspection system, we could actually potentially try to reach that goal. It sounds like we're actually falling behind.
Well, in, in some ways, we, we have fallen behind. We're, we're, my guys are treading water. Um, uh, like I said, uh, if you look at the national standard, um, and the number of our building inventory in the city, I worked with the city, uh, excuse me, the counter, the county auditor. And, and a- as of this last fall, November, when I started to put the study together, there were about 676, 888 buildings in the city of Spokane. Out of these, there are about 5,200 that are not being inspected on that one-year, two-year or three-year cycle, um, that the National Fire Protection Association and, uh, their 1730 standard, uh, recommends.
I guess what I'm kind of going.
I'll just jump in real quick.
Oh, I was, real quick, I was just kind of going is for, you know, an extra $200 investment to build up this program, the savings would be potentially in the thousands of dollars for insurance premiums, potentially down the road.
Potentially, potentially it can, and, and if Chief wants to speak to that, he, I think he had something to say.
I'm just, your recollection is exactly right. That was two fire marshals ago. We got raided by survey and rating. They identified, uh, one of our biggest deficits as a community here within, within our jurisdiction was our ability to complete the mandatory inspections or the suggested best practice, uh, of inspections. And, and every year, you've been here every year and it's fallen behind farther and farther and farther. So I think Lance has asked is to try to build a system that is a best practice that will lead to improved, uh, insurance ratings and lower insurance costs for businesses.
Which is a bigger save, which potentially is a much bigger savings. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you there, but I, I, there is some history with this.
No, no. And you, you've hit the nail on the head, uh, uh, Councilwoman, uh, most, most assuredly. That, that is, that is my goal as the chief, as the chief says, to try to put a system in place. Um, truly, we probably should have had a, uh, a fee study done, uh, a number of years ago to help put this in place. Um, hopefully we can get there. Um, another thing besides our, our known civil infraction list that, that we really need to get our hands around and more people to, to, to get those completed is our residential multi-family, you know? And, and it really hits home when we talked about earlier, the housing situation here in town and our underserved or underhoused. And some of the places that those, uh, lower-income folks are forced to live in, we should be inspecting on an annual basis. So, uh, we have a 1,524 residential buildings, five units or greater, that are not inspected annually. And, and think of anything from, uh, a converted house, a five, six or eight-plex converted house to smaller residential apartment buildings, um, that, that by the national standard, we really should be making sure that these are safe for our residents to be in. And we only get into these buildings currently if there's a, if there's a, uh, a complaint. And, and typically, there are numerous code violations when we have a complaint. You don't know what you don't know. I've got a video here you can click through. I won't take the time right now, but it's, it's just known code violations that we typically see, um, when we go and inspect these buildings. Uh, and, and some of them are pretty eye-opening. So our ask down the road here, if we can, uh, increase our permit fees, uh, so we're at least close to the state average fire department permit fee is five more deputy fire marshals. Uh, we need to add another clerk, three back to help take care of our paperwork. And we really need to jumpstart. Uh, Jamie McIntyre has done so awesome in our community risk reduction program, but she's only one person. And if we could add a community risk reduction specialist to that, then she can actually manage a program that, that we can expand and, and look into other areas, uh, to reduce other, uh, community risks. This in our community. When I did our, our personnel study, uh, nationally to get in every building, this is actually still even a little less than what we need. Uh, we, bringing the national standard, I need about 11 and 1/2 inspectors. This would at least get me to 10. And we've had some great discussions with operations and Chief Schaper and Chief Ober about helping take up some of that slack with, um, company-level inspections during their pre-incident fire planning, uh, at the company level. Um, by funding these positions, of course, we'd be able to address each known code violation in a timely manner, uh, helping us, uh, make Spokane what we're, what we used to call the safest city of our size. Um, we'd be working with building owners to restore substandard housing and performing annual apartment inspections. And we'd be able to respond to commercial inspection requests in a more timely manner. Typically, we try to turn around a, a commercial, uh, inspection request within 24 to 48 hours. Uh, sometimes we, we, we can't make that, uh, with our, with our workload. Um, any, any questions on kind of what I've covered there? And I, I do have a lot more, uh, uh, nitty-gritty stuff if, if anybody in the council wants to discuss it on how we got there and, and, and how I got to my numbers and, and, and that type of thing.
Councilmember Cathcart, then Councilmember Kinnear.
Yeah, so I guess, uh, a couple of questions for you. First, is, is the increase in rates sort of a substitute for the, the fire fee that's been proposed for the last few years?
Um, no, it's, I guess you could think of it maybe that way. I didn't consider it that way at all, uh, Mr. Cathcart. I, I looked at it as we're behind the state average. We're not recovering, we're not recovering the, uh, yeah, the money we should recover to provide the service that really the city needs to, uh, the citizens deserve. Um, so it's really more of a, we need to get back to a balancing act on, on, um, cost versus recovery. Now, I'm not a hundred, I don't think a fire prevention program or division should be 100% cost recovery like, uh, the Development Services Center is. a hundred percent cost recovery like the Development Services Center is. And, and so even with a fee increase, I think you would see we're, we're in that probably back to a seventy or seventy-five percent cost recovery versus even where we were back in two thousand and four, which was twenty-five percent. So a little more bang for your buck as far as cost recovery, but still providing that, that subsidized rate, save for apartment inspections. Instead of charging two hundred dollars for an apartment inspection, we'd only be charging forty-four.
Okay. And then insurance rates was brought up. Do we expect that increasing the inspections will improve our class and actually address insurance rates, or?
It was, yeah, it was one of the things that, three years ago or four years ago, when the WSRB came through last time, it was one of the things that we got dinged on, that we aren't getting into those buildings on the national standard inspection cycle. One of the other things that, that we were dinged on was not having a certified fire marshal, so a credentialed certified fire marshal. I made sure that as an, as the assistant fire marshal, I went out and got credentialed in case I had the opportunity to sit in this, in this seat. So there are those things that we are trying to move towards and, and fix. Some of the other things in the Rating Bureau is, is on the training and operations side of the house. And I know training, the training division has been correcting those for the upcoming inspection. Unfortunately, what you'll see is if, if, if we don't start this process now to, to raise the funds and hire people maybe in two thousand and twenty-two, we'll probably have to ask for a re-inspection or, or a re-evaluation, at least on the prevention division side, maybe in two thousand and twenty-three early, because we have made those corrections.
So I, I guess I would just offer, I, I would, I'm open to a conversation on, on the commercial side, but I think on the housing side, we don't need to be, or we shouldn't be adding costs right now, particularly when we're facing such a crisis in housing and we need housing, we want housing. More cost means more barriers. And so I would rather see the city find a way to subsidize some of this, at least until the point in time comes when we're not facing a housing crisis. I think that would be the better way to go, find some other revenue stream to address this if, if we need to. But the other thing I would ask is, you know, one of the complaints I've heard, and it's been a little while since I've heard it, so maybe it's improved, is just delays in the CO inspections. And so if, is, would increasing the staffing that you're asking for, would that improve the timeliness of those CO inspections as well?
Uh, yes, yes, it would. But I think you will find on the fire end, we typically aren't the holdup in the CO inspection process. You know, that, that inspection process covers every department in the city. And I think when the agreement went in well before my time with the Development Services Center and, and places like the Water Department, Sewer Department, Streets, Urban Forestry and that, it's, it's, it's set at two, two and a half weeks. And I think for the most part, the fire department does a very good job at, at meeting that. Although I said we're shorthanded.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Thanks. This may be for chief Schaefer, I'm not sure. I'm wondering what the actual dollar amount ask is, and I would like to know, I would, I would just like to see all the numbers, revenue, I would like to see where you're projecting revenue is coming, coming from, how much that would be, and then I'd like to see the ask on what it would cost to put all those folks in place.
We do have.
That's, that's all in there. Sorry, chief.
No, I was gonna say what you're saying. Go ahead.
That's all, that's all in there, and it's in, it's in the, the present, presentation, if you want to dive in.
Okay.
Councilwoman, I've got it divided up into three different groups. The multifamily housing brings in about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is about one point two or one point three full-time equivalency. And then the rest of the, the funds are split up between operating permits and construction and plan review fees. So there's three, three different numbers you'll see there, and those were based off two thousand and nineteen permits. So we took the two thousand and nineteen permit numbers, the two thousand and nineteen construction permit numbers and plan review fees, and we applied the new rates to those two thousand and nineteen numbers for a projected increase.
Okay. Thank you.
Lance, I may have missed this, but did you have a potential start date? Was it twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two?
Well, my, yeah, my, I mean, we're, we're still on COVID, right? And there's, and there's some, there's some municipal code changes that are going to need to be done if we do this and, and all that. My hope was that we were, we could pass this by, by September or October at the latest, with a hiring projection of twenty, early first quarter, two thousand and twenty-two. And that would give us the last three months of the year or so to recruit and, and try to start to align some positions.
Because typically, we set fees once a year and we, we make that part of our overall budget work. So maybe work with your chief, work with councilmember Wilkerson, who's our finance chair, and then our public safety chair, councilmember Kinnear, if you need to bring this back for committee work and the timing piece. And then those of us who want to dive deeper, there is quite a packet, so enjoy.
Yes.
Anything else, any other questions from council, any other discussion on this? All right. I'm not necessarily inclined just to have a waiver for housing. I think if it's low-income housing or meeting some of our goals, we could possibly look at a reduction, but we, we, we need to get this funded and up so we can start saving money on the insurance side. So is there anything else that needs to come before us from the fire team on this or any other questions from council?
Yes, ma'am. We, we, we have a wildland urban interface plan to just brief you with.
Can you give us?
Lance has queued up.
Can you give us about?
And this shouldn't take very long.
Five, five to ten, we, we lose our feed at twelve forty-five, so let's see what we've got, five minutes on.
Oh, okay. So wildland urban interface code is adopted by the state. But the state did not adopt section four oh three and four oh four. They, they let the municipalities adopt that back in. So in discussion with chief Schaefer, we really should adopt this four oh three and four oh four back in. It covers a fire department access, so think vehicle access, Egress, routing, multiple access points, if your division, if your, if your area you're trying to build out is big enough, you know, more than X, Y, Z number of houses or apartment units. So it's pretty important that internally with our wildland urban interface area around the city that, that we adopt these two back in. In the standard code, I've included what those sections are. Section four oh three covers access requirements here for the fire department. So where I've highlighted, this is the section we'd like to, to adopt back, back in. And then section four oh four covers water supply that we'd like to adopt next, the wildland urban interface.
And those are from the international, so this is well-vetted. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
Any?
It's, it's, it's the, it's the same code that the state adopts, just minus these two sections.
Councilmember Cathcart.
And then.
Councilmember Cathcart has a question.
I want to ask a question on that. So who is, who is obligated to provide the land for the access and the additional water provisions? Is that going to be the, the builder that has to provide that?
Typically, yes. Although, you know, when we talk about developments and, and that type of stuff, where my quandary comes in at times is where the city has annexed unimproved areas and somebody wants to build a garage and now the fire flow requirements require a hydrant that's a thousand or twelve-hundred feet away, it, it's almost cost prohibitive for that person. And they've been, they've been, they've been annexed into the city and we're not providing those services. So that's, that's a, that's, that could be an even bigger discussion than, than, than me, right?
I think we need to vet that pretty, pretty clearly because that could be a huge barrier to housing development. So I would just want to talk about that a lot more.
And then the other parts of the code we'd like to adopt are the appendices I've listed. And, and there are some general requirements that cover vegetation control and what that looks like, clearances from, from structures, depending on how dense the vegetation is and, and that. A vegetation management plan, so if you're going to build in the wildland urban interface, appendix B is, is this vegetation management plan and how you're going to manage that on your property.
Lance, I think one of the things would be important is to show that map of where we're actually talking about. It's not most of the city, it's on the.
Yes, I think I can, just a second.
Yeah, that would be important.
Unless Brian might have it up, just a second.
So while he's, while he's researching here, I'll just mention, first off, councilmember Cathcart, I appreciate the desire to dig more deep into the topic and that is certainly, that is a shared concern here. We want to make sure everything's upfront and the decision-makers have all the information. So we anticipate going to the council committees in the forthcoming months, but this was meant to be a global overview. Obviously, there's a lot of detail, even in the map that chief has here queued up for us. I'll let him go into that.
So here's the, here's what councilwoman mom was, was discussing. This is kind of our, this is a DNR provided, Department of Natural Resources. They were tasked by the state of Washington to map the wildland urban interface areas. And so this is the wildland urban interface map for the city of Spokane. And it's, it's by, by density, and it's, so it's by population density and the closeness to, to how our, our structures touch that wildland urban interface and the density of that wildland urban interface. And, and the chief has been out evaluating some of these properties and is, and is much more in touch with some of that, if there's questions on that.
And real quick, Lance, we also, besides just, you know, storage of water, provision of water on-site, I know some of those areas are, they use those, those plane, airplanes to do drops because it's very challenging. Beacon Hill around the Five Mile Plateau and, and up on the south as well.
Right. And, you know, I, I think one of the things that we found with aviation resources is they're great when they're available. On Bab Road and Malden, we had, we had no access to aviation due to the weather conditions and the smoke. And same thing with a number of homes that we'd lost in Valley View and, you know, prior to that firestorm. So I think any, any, I guess it kind of goes back to Lance's mention of an ounce of prevention. If we can, if we can build the resilience in the community with leadership that mainly sits in, in the council's arena, and we can encourage good forest practices and good development, like really your whole career has been, councilmember mom, is, has been in planning. So we just wanted to try to mix in some of the proven science that we know with fire prevention and with the, the planning aspects and try to make a safer community.
Great. Is our next step then to maybe invite you back for a second study session, or would that be to committee? Councilmember Kinnear, what do you think?
I think that we should probably do a touch at public safety, but not nearly as in-depth, just a, a quick overview and a reminder. I would also want to add my pitch for, we need to utilize our GOAT project a little bit more, and that needs to be part of fire prevention because we saw how well it worked this year, and they're coming back in the fall. So let's do some things that are not conventional, but that might save property and lives.
Yes, and we need.
Yeah, thanks for that, councilmember. That is part of, that's part of the plan with our community risk reduction specialists is to add that capability to deploy some fuel reduction strategies throughout the community at, at the community level. So not only doing the work, but hopefully enabling people that own the property, giving them the tools and education and, and even some benefit to taking care of their property, making it resilient to fire for the benefit of everybody. So we're, we're definitely tied into that mentality and that's part of our plan.
Chief Schaefer and Lance.
So more to follow.
And Lance, I want to just thank you. You were very prepared. You sent the information ahead of time. You gave us a chance to review it and you flexed on our questions. You get an A-plus for presentations today and let us have some dialogue. We'd like to invite you to work with councilmember Kinnear to get on her public safety committee, and I'm sure you'll be able to forward more of this information to us, and we will hope to see you then. Important and timely information. Thank you so much. We have now come to the end of our time for our study session today. I want to thank everyone for your participation, and we will be back on Monday with our committee meeting at one fifteen and then our, our briefing session at three thirty and then our regular session at six o'clock. Wish all of you a safe and happy weekend.
Thank you for your time.